Congress committee to order.
I'm calling the regional school committee to order a note that we've been recorded. And for those who are speaking to us tonight, please speak right into a microphone so it will be reflected on the recording. Public comments is first. Aaron, any public comments?
No.
Okay, so we'll go right to our high school representatives. Thank you for coming this evening. Gabriela Chi.
I'm also.
Oh, yeah, she didn't come. Aliana, okay.
Hi, I'm Aliana Potter. I'm a junior at CCHS. I'm here to kind of talk about what's been going on in the high school for our first quarter. So in student senate, we recently completed two fairs. We had an activity fair for new students and freshmen to meet with club presidents and sign up for different clubs. We also organized a club brochure to more easily display all the different club offerings at our school. We also on Friday hosted a winter sports fair, which was similar. It displayed all the offered winter sports in order for students, especially freshmen and new students, to better understand what their options are. We also sold stickers to raise money for the Lawrence and Andover community that was affected by the fires recently. We're currently working towards the spirit assembly, which takes place on the half day before Thanksgiving, and organizing all of the promotion for that and decoration involved with that. In student government, they hosted the freshman dance and they had over 200 attendees. And the pink dance, which was part of the Kicks for Cancer Weekend, and made over $3,500. They also are working on the Thanksgiving luncheon, which will occur on the Saturday before Thanksgiving, where senior citizens from both Concord and Carlisle are invited to attend a traditional Thanksgiving meal served by CCHS student volunteers. Our sports teams have done really well. The girls soccer team is undefeated. And the girls soccer, boys soccer, and girls field hockey had their senior nights this past week. The cross-country team had their DCL meet today. And the varsity cheerleading team has their first competition this Sunday. And the football team just made it into playoffs. We also have the Japanese exchange students arriving next week. And there will be a plaque installed to commemorate a 25-year partnership with the sister school.
Wow.
You're busy.
Yeah. Good stuff going on.
Any questions?
Oh, I was curious.
Last, I guess, two meetings here. We had the public relations crew here. How's that going? Is word getting out on all the activities?
Yeah, Gabby Shi, who is supposed to be here tonight, she's part of that team. They've been working on different Instagram posts as well as kind of keeping up to date with the goings-on at the high school. And she actually helped put together a video that kind of summarized the entire Kicks for Cancer Weekend, which came out really well.
Great.
Thank you. And the activities fair, did that get a good showing? Did a lot of people show up?
Yeah, it was actually, we did it in a different way than past years. We had it in the learning commons as well as the cafeteria. And it was much more well-tended, so.
That's good. That's great.
How do we get the video? Access the video?
You can just check it out on my blog too if you want.
Oh. All right. We read your blog. Some of us read your blog. But the whole Instagram thing with the kids is... I have a kid there. No, but that's for them. That's for you guys.
They are, they are, the kids are really good at making, they've mastered, you know, the shortcuts. With the little music and the little catchy, so yes, we will be happy to share them out too. They're, they did a few on the fair and also on the Mighty Moose. And so, yeah, some really cool stuff.
So mostly shared through Twitter?
Well, this is, this is very interesting. It's, see, we, this is, we've got a little bit of an education too. So what we were explaining to the kids when we first met with them, hi Gabby.
Hi.
Is, you know, we really want this to be, we want to get to the kids. And so we, you know, we were using Facebook and Twitter. And, you know, we received an education that that's a waste of our time for the young kids. And Instagram is where to be. So that's where the basketball, you know, the stuff goes. Now, we do share, then share it on Facebook after for parents to see.
The old people, for those of us who are slow to get up at the times.
Yeah, I learned that I am very far behind too, so, yeah.
That's great. Awesome. Thanks.
So Gabby, would you like to address the school committee?
Oh, yeah, so I was just, I talked to Ms. Schreier earlier today about what we really do. We meet on Mondays and we really focus on just kind of reaching out what happens in Concord Carlisle High School on a daily basis versus more on a larger scale. Because I feel like a lot of people miss what happens on the day-to-day. For example, Denmark exchanges and new teachers that come and you don't necessarily get to meet because they kind of get lost in the whole move and motion of the high school. And smaller on the sports events and smaller theater productions that the majority of people don't get to see. And smaller fundraising for clubs and sports that don't get the same amount of spotlight as some of the bigger sports and bigger names in Concord Carlisle. For like, example, like soccer versus like the squash club, which is still at the club. So it's just kind of letting people know what's going on that they wouldn't get to see without, like, kind of like digging around. We try to make it more like apparent what's happening.
That's all right.
Yep.
Tells me it takes a lot of work to get it.
Yeah, definitely a lot of work, but I feel like it's very rewarding. You get to learn a lot of new things and a lot about what's going on and you feel a little more dialed in with what's happening.
Oh, I bet. And how often are you, I'm gonna date myself here. Posting, sending out this on Instagram, what is that for?
Instagram.
Yeah, really. How often are you Instagramming?
So when we meet on Mondays, we talk about, me and three other students, we talk about what kind of videos we have in mind and what we've heard, what we heard what's going on and what we are planning on doing that week. So we'll try to post as frequently as we can, especially on the Instagram. And we'll try to post on Facebook maybe a little less, but a little more of a magnitude of information. And then there's always, clubs will reach out to us and email us about things that they would like to get posted. Because we are one of the, like, more known ways that how students can get information directly onto. The Instagram, which is followed by a majority of the students, majority of the parents, and just kind of broadcast information outside. Like, we want to know about, like, for the winter sports fair, Ollie emailed me with, along with the student media, about student senate, about the stickers that they were for fundraising. And so we put that out and just kind of what was going on. So we try to post as frequently as we can.
That's great. Clearly, you're doing a great job getting the word out if people are coming to you saying, "I need to get the word out about something."
Have you seen, like, growth in the people now actually come to you? And also you have people, like, signing on and...
Yeah, we've definitely seen majority more people because people will talk, come talk to me about if they want something to be posted. What's the process of doing that? And we just talked about this past Monday, kind of making like a Google form so clubs could just kind of have already like what they want to be posted and just kind of get it out to all four of us. And then we could just be like, oh, do you see what this club sent to us? I'm gonna post it today or tomorrow, tonight. So we just kind of, yeah, we're trying to make it more, more of an organized way versus them just sending us emails, trying to get it like in a very like easy way to do.
Right. That's terrific. Good idea. That's great.
So I just have a question for the both of you. You know, I read the high school newspaper regularly. What's your perception as to how many students read that? Do you read it yourselves?
So we really, I, speaking of myself, I really don't read the newspaper. If I, for looking for certain events going on, I'll look at the principal's blog or the Facebook page or the student fan page or the Instagram. So we really, I personally don't read it that much, so much that, this is really bad. But when we first talked about it, I honestly didn't know we had a newspaper. So, yeah.
There you go. Something else to get the word out about.
I was just gonna say.
Just send the paper to the parents.
Yeah.
Some of those articles.
That's funny because I read it.
You know, I mean, it's worthwhile.
Yeah, a lot of student achievements are talked about there. We kind of, it's briefly touched upon in some of the blogs and some of the bulletin for the day. But it's really going to highlight more student achievements that we don't really get to hear about.
Great. And I agree too. It's often, you know, thoughtful political commentary or, you know, societal commentary. So it's good writing. Right? That's great. Thanks for that.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate the information and the feedback. And we're looking forward to the next one a couple of weeks from now.
Thanks.
So we have other recognitions?
We do. I want to introduce a few members of the elementary school staff. We've been really doing some great work. So their invitations are much based on what I just see wandering classrooms, wandering hallways in schools. And so I put out some invitations. All three are specialists from the elementary school, which I think is especially a great opportunity to showcase some of the work they do, a little outside of their specialty perhaps. So I'm gonna invite them to come on up. Mike Drummond from Willard, Tim Gojo from Alcott, and Roseanne Swain from Thoreau are all here. And they each have a little different thing to share with you from each of their schools. Tim's first, okay? Alcott's always first.
No, no, no.
Oh, trust me, Tim.
Sharon C. is doing it.
So, sorry. So this, we are Alcott, our flag wall cultural competency project. And just a quick why and when Lori invited me to speak this evening. This stemmed from a summer class that I took a couple of years ago. Walking in the shoes of your ELL students, English Language Learner students, formerly ESL students. I felt in my gym, and I've been at Alcott now for, this is my 24th year. I was lacking diversity, not in how I taught or meeting the needs of my students, but in what was on the walls, posters, list of words, my rules. There's one flag there for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is a United States flag. And we have some colleagues who are doing some great things already in place. So our librarian, Carrie O'Rourke, has multiple ways to, you know, say library. She has read. Second grade teacher, Carrie Delaney, has welcome outside her classroom in many languages. So I then, the process of what we went with is I collaborated with Emily Farrar, our ELL teacher, to see how many countries are actually, were actually serviced by her in her work every day. And we came up with 23 countries or regions or territories that she services. I then emailed that list out to teachers to see if they identified with any other country that wasn't on that list for themselves. Printed, cut, laminated the flags, put them up on the wall under the banner of "We Are Alcott." I really wanted it to represent our whole community. So I knew, you know, new MEPCO director, Andrew, is from Ghana, was born there, moved here when he was 12. The flag of Ghana is up on our wall. He is part of our community. Families, teachers, support staff, custodians, where they're from, where they identify are up on the wall. So here's a second grade class. So currently we have 72 countries or regions or territories. It's actually opened up a nice, some of which I've had to, like Lori said, get out of my comfort zone as a phys ed teacher and research a little bit about a region and a territory. You know, what is Macau in China and what is Hong Kong if it's not, you know? So we've had some great conversations with the kids, but they're just pointing to the flags that they identify with. So the outcome, I feel for me, it's allowed our students an opportunity to share and be excited to see their flag or flags when they come in the gym. It's begun a process of how we identify, who are we. Displays a nice value of uniqueness and diversity in our community, going, you know, what we're working towards. Families have been able to discuss the heritage. I think personally, when I was growing up, I was born in the United States. I have some Portuguese in me, some French in me. I knew that. I'm not sure a lot of our students know that these days. I don't know where it kind of went away, but it's had some nice discussions about their family trees. I had one fifth grade girl who was adopted from the Congo, her and her brother. She brought in her family tree, but it stemmed from, you know, France and Germany and Switzerland and all these other countries that her parents are part of as well. But for her to come in, you know, I think that was great. Here's, you know, the center, "We Are Alcott," the left side currently, the right side. The flags are about six by eight inches right now. And then this is just the representation of what's up there, the 72 countries, regions, or territories. Just a quick funny story, you know, it's, we've been doing it for the last month. And I had a third grader two weeks ago who came in the gym, was all excited, said, "Mr. G, what about Singapore?" And I said, "Okay, so tell me about Singapore. How do you identify in your life with Singapore?" And I know this family. You know, dad was born in Jersey, mom was born in Winchester. So back in my head, you never know, I said, you know, and he said, "My uncle works in Singapore." And I said, "Okay." And back in my head, maybe you marry a woman from Singapore? Is, you know, did he marry a woman from Singapore? He said, "Nah." I said, "Okay, Henry, you know, tell me, how do you, you know, where's the connection?" "Well, he works in Singapore." And I said, "Okay, was he born in Singapore?" He said, "No, he's born in Jersey." So, you know, we're trying not to have it be where mom or dad are working or where the cruise boat left off. And we're really trying to make it part of who we are. And I think we're kind of getting to the point, we're kind of, you know, not quite there, but we're at 72. But it's just a fun project and I think Mike's gonna come up and talk a little bit about how he connected it as well. Thank you, Mom.
Thanks, Tim, members of the school committee and everyone. Lori, thanks for inviting me tonight. Mine's gonna be a little bit redundant because Tim's basically gone over exactly what we're doing. So the goal is for the students and teachers of Willard to celebrate each other's diverse heritage or inclusive community, community and our differences or what makes us stronger. And we're trying to pass that along to our students. So the process, the idea of the heritage wall was discussed at our PE department meetings. Tim told us about the idea. Beth and I kind of latched on to it. We thought it was a really neat idea. So we started the process and what I did was collaborated with our ELL teacher, Cheryl Brandline. To get a working list of the heritage of the countries that our ELL students were from. I then posted the flags for her students as they were laminated. And I asked our art teacher, Mrs. Saunders, if she could have her students make a banner, "We Are Willard," to go up over and design. So the process continued. An email I sent out to our staff explaining that I was going to be putting up a heritage wall, displaying the flags of each of the students and the staff's family heritage. Everybody showing how diverse our community is. Classroom teachers talked to their students about their family backgrounds. And they were invited to add their flag to the wall. Teachers were given a link, so I, I had them go right to a link. And basically they just clicked on the link. The flags would pop up, so it was free clip art. And then they just laminated it, put it in my mailbox, and then I just posted it up to our wall. So the result is the teachers had discussions with their students, talking about their heritage. So they've got some great conversations going about where are you from, what's your family from? Where's mom from? Where's dad from? And the students kind of really latched on to it. A lot, had a lot of students say, "Hey, Mr. Drummond." Kind of similar to Tim. "I don't see my flag up there. Where is Spain?" Or "Where is Mexico?" So they would, I just said, "Hey, you gotta go back to your teacher. They have the link. They'll click it for you." Right? So it pops up. You can have them, have them printed out and laminated and bring it down to Mr. Drummond. And I popped it right up onto the wall. So, "Don't have as many as Tim. Tim, what did you say? How many?"
We're at 72 right now.
So we're at 39, but I think we started a little later. We're trying to catch up. But we're, we're doing great. It's a great heritage wall. It's in the process of being formed. The heritage with the wall is displayed by the gymnasium for all to see. It will be displayed throughout the year and for our international night. And again, so far, 39 of our countries are represented, showing how diverse our family backgrounds are in Willard. And lastly, it's just a picture of our heritage wall. It's in the process. Looking nice. I think I put four more up today, so it's steadily gaining. We're catching up to them. I don't know if we'll catch up, but we're gonna try.
We have a couple of dragons, so be careful. Bhutan and Wales, so some cool dragon flag.
It's nice to learn about the different areas where the children are from. So I've really enjoyed talking to them about it as, as they're bringing them down to me. Just, you know, they're just happy to see their heritage up and well represented there. Their pride comes out of, hey, I'm from Ethiopia. "I'm from Haiti, Mr. Drummond. I love that flag up there. Thanks for putting that up for me." So, thanks very much for letting me speak to you folks and we're gonna pass this along.
I don't have any nice little walls like this to show, so I'm just gonna sit here and use the microphone. Put it on. I'll just talk loudly, like I usually do.
So this is really the brainchild of Beth Murphy, who couldn't be here today. So I'm gonna read her notes on her sidekick. I was just part of this whole thing. But she really is the one that came up with it. We don't have a heritage wall, but I actually like that. I don't think we're gonna reach 72, but who knows? So on behalf of Beth Murphy and myself, I'd like to talk about the PALS program that we started last year at the Thoreau School. PALS is a program designed to enrich the education of students who may speak another language at home. This program aligns with the district goal to develop an inclusive culture where practices and procedures reflect culturally proficient knowledge and skills. We'd like to thank the Concord Ed Fund for making this possible, our administration schools committee for supporting our program, and we're gonna be doing it again into year two now, and Molly Hurley, our ESL teacher, who's been instrumental in getting this program running. Beth first got, Beth first got the idea for such a program when she took the SEI course through the Edco Collaborative. There she met teachers from Lexington who ran a similar program. At Thoreau, we meet five monthly. It's before school. And it's for students that don't speak English or have parents that, where they don't speak English, that are at home. We created, now I can talk about my part. We created activities that would facilitate and engage the students in language so that they could work on the English language, learn some of the, let's put it that way here. Hold on, page two. Encourage the use of academic and social vocabulary. We had eight students last year. They were aged from first grade to fifth grade, boys and girls. So we had to come up with activities that would be age-appropriate and that would be fun for everyone. Some days we met in the gym. We played basketball, horse. We played cornhole. We would play jacks. We would do this, the cup game where you stack them and unstack them at a record time. In the music room, we would play board games. We played dominoes. We played this dice game called Left, Right, Center, which reinforced left and right. If you've played it, it's great. It's fun. It's easy. And then we, we moved on to Apples to Apples, which hopefully all of you know, I don't have to describe it. It was more challenging for them because it required them to read and to understand what the word meant. But they really had a good time. We talked about traditions and customs that we celebrated at our homes, certain foods that we might have used in these customs, and we talked about the food they liked in America. Many of these children were born in another country, so being here in America was a whole new environment for some of them. Molly Hurley went and got some feedback from some of the students that I just thought I'd like to read to you right now. One student said, "I liked getting to know other kids in the school that I didn't know before. It was fun to see the teachers before school and not in class. They were different. They were more fun." I thought of my lessons. One said, "I liked all the games and activities. I liked meeting new kids and being silly with the teachers." Mrs. Swain and Mrs. Murphy, Mrs. Murphy are really funny. So that's great. One said, "I felt good helping younger kids with some of the games like Apples to Apples where they had to read." And one said, "It was fun to meet other kids who speak Chinese at home." These children would meet with the ESL teacher, like, in a small group setting, maybe one-on-one. They didn't realize that within the school system, there were other children like them. So this was a way for them to get to meet other children. Reminds me of the program that the middle school has started where you have a teacher that kind of meets with small groups. I think these children felt a little more connected to us by the end of the year, more comfortable in our classrooms. All the students really liked the program and if it continues, we'd want to participate in it. And I just have to share one of their most memorable moments. Actually, it involved me. I tried to do the wall climbing, what do you call it, wall board at the gym? What is that thing, the climbing thing? Anyway, never done. And I thought, okay, I'm gonna do this. Got my sneakers on and everything. I got right to the end and I put my foot down and I accidentally missed it and I turned and banged my head against the gymnasium wall. So I ended up with a big bruise. No, didn't become unconscious or anything like that. But that was the memory that stays out the most. So we thank you all for this. I love what you're doing at the other schools. It was so great to hear that. Hoping we can make a difference in these children's lives. And so, thank you for letting me present.
Can I just comment quickly? Obviously, I mean, all of this is fabulous and I love all of it. And one of the really neat things is how each of these came from a teacher, a specials teacher. And it's now pervading the field, it is pervading the whole school. It's really just, just pretty magical to see. And you know, phys ed is a subject that you don't think of typically as integrating with other subjects a lot when we talk about interdisciplinary. But this is a way that you guys brought your experience to touch the whole school. And I just, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and all the work you're doing with the strategic plan and inclusivity and all those conversations you're having and seeing it, you know, an opportunity to have those conversations and broaden from, you know, what you see and what you take and what your address is here. It's, that's, that's, it's just more the same sort of progress of pushing in that area. It's awesome. It's really true.
I mean, the conversations have been great. I mean, again, knowing students from kindergarten through fifth grade as a special teacher, you get to know a lot about them. And I used to coach at the high schools, so they would wonder how I knew their, their dog's name and everything else. But it brings a whole nother realm of conversation. Students who I knew a lot about are now sharing other things. Students who I knew only a little about because they're new to our building or new to our country were sharing things and it's just a connection. You know, so it's been great.
It's really great.
What was it, Roseanne, did you say, "They are different. They are fun"?
Yeah.
And we talk about appreciating differences and what you're reminding us is, no, no, no. We start with understanding differences and then we layer on the appreciation. So thank you.
Makes it all real, what we've been talking about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you. Go Reds, huh?
Go Sats. Oh, Bruins.
Bruins.
I know it's a long season.
It's a long time. We're talking this summer. All right, so reading the minutes, we have Concord first. We have CPS minutes nine, 1118. I have a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Second. Record. Help me out.
Uh, second.
You're upcoming?
No, I didn't.
Just a second I need.
Oh, about a second, right?
Yeah, we have a second.
Oh, I thought you were asking for a second.
No. You're the chair.
Wow, I'm trying. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the joint school committee meeting on nine twenty-five eighteen.
So moved.
Just one correction, Aaron. On the third paragraph under Chairs and Liaisons report, who starts with Mr. Brom? The fourth line down, you should see, you should say 12 of 13 articles. It's just a technical correction. So all those in favor with the correction being noted?
Aye.
So now we go to the Chairs and Liaisons reports. Anyone?
I'd like to acknowledge the two volunteer group and in particular, two staff members, Martha Hammer and Nicole Bloomfield. They've spent a bit of time this fall revamping the entire website for the high school portal for community service. So it's no longer independent, but is very much part of the high school website right now. And students can drill right into the community service pages. They can record all of their information. They can look for opportunities. And it's again embedded in the district website finally and in a really, really effective way. So shout out to them and to the volunteers who work with them.
I can update quickly that the day after our last meeting here, we had another bunch of subcommittee meeting. And Jared took us, like, again, through in what we had talked about here in terms of the new budget structure and everything in more detail. And it was, it was just great to dig in detail. I'm going to all those now, but good hearty discussion there. So thank you.
And I'd like to mention that the Adult Community Ed is having their program on November 7. I think we've sold, oh, I want to say, I don't know how many tickets, but there are still seats left. And I want to encourage you to go if you can because you're not gonna want to miss this program. If you don't know, it's called the defamation experience. It's a court case about defamation and the audience will serve as the jury. We're very excited about it, so we're hoping that you will spread the word if you can.
So I've been thinking about it for a while and then I went and read all the information. Of course, I registered. So if you look at the information, you will be pulled right in. It looks like a really profound program, actually.
And provocative. We've had some response from people who say, "How come you know that you're just doing, you know, stirring things up or why is it about this class of people?" And you have to be provocative to teach sometimes.
It's gonna be touchy and people are going to, what, encounter themselves, I think, right?
And then a week later, we're gonna have a meeting to have people, if they want to just discuss their own experience, they can. So that will happen a week out.
Wait, is that date published for that? Is that date published for that?
I believe it is. If not, it will be at the event.
So the event itself is again November seventh, a Wednesday night at the Alcott.
The Alcott, yep.
Okay, so actually, I have two or three comments here. One I'd like to start with is that I would like to draw your attention to ballot question number three, which is part of the state election on November sixteen. This ballot question is about transgender anti-discrimination. Since this is relevant to students at our public schools, I would like to urge all of you listening to carefully consider question three. It's explained in the official Information for Voters Election Guide that I think we all got. And please vote. I also attended the Effective Governance Workshop this past Saturday. It was a two-hour event at Town Hall in Concord. And I took a lot of notes and will review those as we go forward. And there'll be a couple of suggestions coming to the school committee in the future. But most importantly, in the short term, we are looking at getting our budgets approved. And we had a very effective meeting last Thursday where Lori and Jared both presented very effectively. It was a very lively discussion for...
Who'd they present to?
The Concord Finance Committee. And of course, the Cala Committee meeting is coming up later on this month. Tuesday, okay. So, and also Heather and Joanna were there, made some helpful comments. So I think the overall meeting and the sentiment was very positive. A lot of more detail presented, et cetera, et cetera. The Concord Select Board this past Monday, a week from this past Monday, announced the seven candidates for the Town Manager Search Committee. And those seven will be joined by two select board members, Alice Kaufman and Mike Lawson. So there'll be nine on that committee. And they will, you know, look at hiring a search firm, et cetera, similar to what we did a few, a little over a year ago, I guess. I was gonna say months, but it's been two years.
Two years. We were doing that.
Time flies. And last, the NICO Women Voters Education Committee met recently and discussed civics. And I guess I saw a picture of...
Yeah, the LEEDs here, they've been in the classrooms of the eighth grades Friday and yesterday. So I was able to get in yesterday. I know Mr. Cameron's there as well. It's really great activity with the kids on the different history of the right to vote. And I think the kids were definitely taken back with how brand-new that is for some groups of people and how that's not to be taken for granted. So it was really powerful activity, so grateful for their support.
That's great. Thank you to the LEED for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other reports? Okay, so we'll go to the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, I get to be really brief tonight because everybody else is here. So I'm gonna just highlight a couple of things you will not hear in there, improvement plans and some of the updates they're going to provide. School safety, I am convening, reconvening the school safety committee. We're gonna meet four times this year, November eighth, January twenty-fourth, March seventh, and May sixteenth. I have representation from all schools and administrators and a parent and both of our resource officers. Officer Gina has joined us over the last week, shadowing Officer Camillari in the schools and learning an awful lot and jumping in, jumping right in. So exciting. And we're looking forward to getting that committee back together. You've heard some of the goals that I brought to you at the last meeting that that group will be looking to update our plans and look at technology and some different facets of safety. Budget, budget, budget. We are getting close to finished. So we're getting there. I can't thank enough the leadership team and the amount of work this has been. Everyone's been really committed and putting in an awful lot of time. Two power days next week to take the compiled budgets and look at where we are and what we're gonna bring to you for the thirteenth. So it's been a lot of work, but I think really productive and positive going forward. Just a couple of highlights of mine last week. I presented to the Rodeo of Concord last Thursday and shared a good portion of the strategic plan with them. They're very interested in continuing our partnership, which has been great. I also toured the Case Executive Director. We've notified Case that the Sanborn classrooms will not be available next year. So we're showing them some of the space that could be available at Pele and trying to help save, float what their needs will be. There is a proposed meeting of leadership from Concord and Carlisle and the schools to, at the town and school leadership level. So we're excited for that. And hopefully that can continue to bridge our communication. So I'm gonna leave it at that because all the rest is gonna come up with the rest of the night.
So there wasn't any correspondence?
I actually wanted to bring you a clear gov update. Can you give correspondence if I could? So we've been talking with Superintendent O'Shea. It sounds like Carlisle's not looking to participate right now. So that led me back to the representative to talk on what that would mean for our two districts in terms of cost. It appears, so they had last offered us a seventy-five hundred, approximately seventy-five hundred dollar subscription fee, which includes the one-time startup inclusive of Carlisle. It turns out that that's just their number for a mid-level enrollment.
Is that both districts?
So it was all three.
All three around.
So now I asked him to go back. And when he subtracts out the Carlisle number, we still fall within the range of both the combined mid-level district. So the cost is essentially the same with or without Carlisle. So we're looking at about a seventy-five hundred dollar cost, which would be split, really a fifty-fifty split across Concord and the region. I pushed back because I still think that's kind of high. But I need to bring it to you. We are getting asked, several of you have asked me. And I know the finance committee continues to use what they have access to and ask questions of us. So I think we need to make a decision here at some point and decide whether we're gonna try it or wait for another time to try it. I see pros and cons. This is all about how we use it and benefits that it provides. If we spend that money and it's not something we really use, that's not necessarily productive.
So does Superintendent O'Shea know that it's sort of the same price with or without?
No, he doesn't. Because I didn't know that till four o'clock this afternoon.
No, I mean, if...
Yeah, no, you're right.
Maybe to portion the cost.
No, you're right. To that point, that was new this afternoon at four o'clock.
Yeah.
Talking to the rep.
And just to go back when you're talking with the reps, since the Town of Concord is a customer, is there any way...
We're getting a fifteen percent discount because of that.
That's reflected in the...
It's already reflected.
But there's no way to look at the Town of Concord and our district as...
They're different subscriptions, municipal and good school.
Trying to...
I'm trying pretty hard here. I tried pretty hard.
What's the commitment this year, this year, this year, month?
Is it worth seventy-five hundred dollars to you?
We would have to actively really dive in and use it. I think it could be, but we certainly have to commit to that.
Do you think you would?
I think we would in terms, right now, we would need it to respond to questions we're being asked. I think we could produce more documents from it. They're quicker and user-friendly than what we currently might pull out of Desi and some of the other sites that the data's feeding from.
So it still would be the same data?
It's the same data.
They collect for the questions.
Correct.
Do we know if it's had really significant implications for any other school districts where, because we know it's same data. We simply know it's made available to us in a form that is easier to interpret, easier to share, easier to use for decision-making purposes. But back to Mary's point, it's all about time. Are we going to, if we buy the tool, are we gonna use the tool? What does it replace? Are we going to protect that investment? That's the big unknown, I think.
So too far, and I'm very mixed, I'll just say. I'm very mixed. Two things I do think that our opportunities, one, I used extensively in Duxbury, which, because it showed numbers in a really clean way that we could, the third-party piece was powerful at that point to be able to say this was ClearGov's numbers. And it just took a lot of subjectivity out of it because the interpretation wasn't there because nobody had manipulated numbers other than what ClearGov had fed. And it did make some powerful points for us. My superintendent at the time used it in his town meeting presentation. I think we are spending a lot of time talking about benchmarking and I can't help but wonder if it would be a tool that could facilitate that conversation more effectively. You know, poor Wally's been trying to crunch a report together here to try to capture any of what we talked about last year. And it's so complex because we hand did, you know, so much data got hand-correlated that to capture it's really, really challenging. I think it might let us just pull numbers and have the conversation about the content of the numbers, not how to get the numbers. Not that, we'll have a little bit of that because it's the two districts and we may have to do some combining. But kind of like we do with the data we use, you know, from the kids, we don't want to spend time talking about what tool we're using and how we're collecting. We want to look at the actual outcomes and how we're gonna respond to that. So I think it might shift us in that direction. I don't think we'll know till we have it is some of the bottom line.
Well, to that, along that line of thinking, sorry, just know till we have it in terms of the town's subscription and what they're using it for. Now granted, they have a full-time information officer, which we don't. But given that they have access to it, is it possible to look through kind of what they're doing with it? Are they doing much outbound communication with this?
I haven't spoken to them, per se. We certainly can.
When they're doing it for us, are they still keeping it separate districts? I thought they were doing some merging now.
Not to any great extent. We're gonna have to do most of that compiling. You can pull things up at simultaneous screens and things like that. But in terms of saying, we're gonna compare ourselves to Lexington or AP, we're still gonna have some work to do there.
Yeah.
Still feeding from the two separate data sources.
So it doesn't, maybe I have a different context. It doesn't seem like a lot of money for a year if you think you will actually try it out and test it out for the right...
If we pay for it, we're gonna put it on the upper priority to use it as a resource. There's no question.
And you've used it before.
I have used it before, so there's some habit there already.
Even though you might be ambivalent about the purchase, you're not ambivalent about the product.
No, it's a user-friendly format. What we are finding already, we're having to answer questions that require more detail than what ClearGov might be showing front-facing. And that's always gonna be the case.
More than what they're showing now without the subscription fee.
So it could be that it allows the public a little more information to not make a judgment based on the first thing that they see, but able to roll down a little bit farther.
So my question is, let's assume we subscribe to it. You get all this information. Will that help you in the school department to be more efficient? In other words, maybe because of the way the information is presented, could lead you to some decisions that actually could prove to be money-saving?
I don't know that it would.
It cover costs.
Yeah, looking for an ROI here.
Yes. It's mostly a communication tool. I'm not gonna promise that it's gonna help us save money. We're doing that pretty well on our own. But it could help us see what other districts are spending and pose some questions about why are we spending such-and-such on something and dig it even a little deeper. Maybe it causes us to call someone and say, how did that get to be that number?
I would note, just comparative work we do with other districts, it's not gonna help us with the qualitative comparisons, which has always been a real challenge for us.
Most of me thinks we decide and just go and not look back necessarily and review it a year from now.
And if we're gonna do it, we should do it soon.
Yes.
Although, is a year three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, there's no...
That is my belief.
And I believe you told us before, there was this fifteen percent discount in their pricing, but there is no great tease in the price this year that would foresee that a big bump next year. Something like that.
No, you will not have that fifteen hundred dollar setup fee.
It should be a little less going forward, right?
So you're looking for consensus?
I had not, it's probably sufficient.
Okay.
Need to vote.
Just a nod or all nod?
There you go. Tell me to go.
Yes, nod.
I think, yeah, I think if, I mean, I would echo Mary. If you think that you will use it, it certainly seems like valuable information. And we have all been talking about wanting to be able to share information more efficiently.
It's another tool for your communication services.
Well, it's helpful if you've already used it, so you're already gonna be exploited right away.
Yeah, I have quite a bit of familiarity.
I think that would be great.
No, we're putting it in...
So to that point, I'll go back with Carlisle.
I know, I was going to say, no, because that's why if it's the same price.
It's the same price.
We might as well just keep Carlisle, right?
Well, then a question, how do we pay for it? Let's take that offline.
Yeah, we didn't know that information until four o'clock. Okay, thank you.
Lori, just one other point on this. We're talking about you and you alone being the person that's going to take advantage of this. That doesn't have to be true.
No, of course not. No, the point is that it's public information.
I know it's public, but my point is you're not gonna be the gateway or the sole person that uses this for interpretive purposes.
No, in fact, the point is that it's publicly accessible in an easier way. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So reports for discussion next?
Kristen's gonna come up and talk with you on... Yeah. Are you good?
Yeah.
That's just how we... Kristen's got the MCAS and accountability updates for this year. We've got results a month ago or so.
This is gonna be the fastest look at MCAS data. It's the uptime. I know about the opening pitch and the James Taylors and the ransom. I got this. No, this is the annual time that you get to glow about how our students achieve on the MCAS and I get to geek out with data. So we all have, it's a win-win. It's a good, good thing. So, but there is a change that's been made by the state. So I need to describe that to you in intricate detail so you can memorize it and never forget it. So the whole system that we've used before where schools are ranked from one to five, one being the highest, is gone. So this is the new system. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about this system highlights and then how we measure accountability in the state of Massachusetts. And then how those four different indices are weighted. And then how we achieve here. What are the normative components, meaning what's compared with other populations of the same age kids? And what are criterion reference components, which are looking at the standards that we have statewide for every subject area? And then looking at how schools are now gonna be categorized. As I said, out with the one to five, in with the new system. And then how districts are gonna be categorized, because that's changed as well. And I'm just not gonna agree with that either. All right, so as I said, we're looking at a larger range of student achievement now. It's not just academic achievement on the MCAS test. We're looking at absenteeism. We're looking at dropout rates as a state. And so those are now factors. Similarly, our students' achievement who are English language learners is now being a critical component of that for every district. So that's good for us as well to look at. I think I've said everything else, yeah. Okay, so our schools are basically grouped into two camps. There's the non-high school, so I put on there, that includes Alcott, Willard, Thoreau, and the middle school. And their accountability indicators are fourfold. It's the achievement, that's a national look. We have to do that. So that's gonna be weighted the most highly. The second is student growth. That's only done in Massachusetts. So we decided as a state to measure how students have grown against themselves. So we actually do look back at how they've grown. And for us in Concord, that's probably the most important piece of data to look at. As I said, we're looking at our students who are English language learners now and weighting that very heavily. And then additional indicators, and that one would be for the non-high schools, chronic absenteeism, meaning they've missed more than ten percent in the school year. So they have to have missed eighteen or more days to be in that category. So for the high school, for our high school, all of those same accountability indicators are present, but we now add some more. One is high school completion. So we're looking at how many kids graduate in four years? How many kids graduate in five years? How many kids drop out? And as you know, those numbers are incredible. They're great for Concord-Carlisle High School. And then another additional indicator, and this one is mixed for us, is looking at the percentage of eleventh and twelfth graders who are taking high-level rigorous courses. So we think all our courses are high-level and rigorous, but the state defines them only as AP courses, international baccalaureate, dual- enrollment courses, and other selected rigorous courses. So, you have to have something behind it. Mostly for towns like us, this is counting only as AP. So, it's not how many kids take the AP, which is a lot here in Concord-Carla, but it's how many kids take a class that's labeled with AP in the title. Does that make sense? So, we're now gonna be judged on that.
How, how do you get an other, what was an other selected rigorous course?
Yeah, I tried on that one. They're, they're all rigorous.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, doesn't work, yeah, sorry.
Are they giving, is there any like process to qualify for other rigorous class? Are there other classifications?
You would make a case for it, yeah.
Kind of class by class?
Yeah, but basically, there has to be an assessment at the end that is norm reference.
Standardized.
So, yeah, it's a pretty hard verb to go.
Yeah.
So, as I said, the English Language Proficiency Indicator is new for us, weighting it very heavily. And that only implies if you have a certain number of ELL students. And at every grade level, we pretty much don't meet that indicator. So, for us, we would look at our English language learners proficiency overall, like for all the grades together. And we do quite well in that. We often see kids jumping one, two, three levels in one year. So, that's really great, great ELL staff here. So, the weighting, it's the same as what I showed you before. The achievement is weighting at 67% or about two-thirds. Student growth, that's the Massachusetts. We're looking at the no ELL column, 22.5%. And then no ELLs, and then the additional indicators, that would be the absenteeism, that's 10%. And similarly, at the high school, now, high school completion becomes much more important. So, it's up at 20% and it's just taken directly out of achievement. So, I, I would say, to extemporize for a second, this, this indicator is not really meant for us. It really is measuring other school systems that have a higher dropout rate and so forth. So, there's a normative component, which means that's a normative, means it's compared to other kids at the same age group. And so, all schools are given an accountability percentile, meaning somewhere in there, where did they fall? And if you're, say, at the 99th percentile, that means you did better than 99 percentiles of students. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, there's this new indicator. So, we used to talk about subgroups. We don't, we measure subgroups, but we don't talk about them anymore. Because now, a new sort of cohort has been created, which is the 20% of students in each school that are the lowest performing the previous year. So, it doesn't matter if they're special needs, it doesn't matter if they're students of color, it doesn't matter if they're ELL. It just, whoever performed the least well, the 20%, is now being measured as a group. And that's the group that's gonna be reported on the most. So, I used to talk a lot about special ed kids when I came here, and no longer, it'll be this group. So, we can only compare, this is a weird year because not only are we changing the system, we're changing the tests that we're giving. So, if you remember, maybe seven years ago, we all gave what is now being called the legacy MCAS. And we did that in grades three through eight, and then in grade 10. And so, we made a transition for a couple of years. We decided to help out and pilot the PARC assessment, which was a measure of the Common Core. But Massachusetts did away with PARC. We now use MCAS, which is being called MCAS 2.0, or the new MCAS. So, in our elementary schools, in our middle school, in math and English language arts, we've done that. We've used the new MCAS. We were a pilot for that, we've now used it a couple of years. And in science, we're still in the legacy MCAS. At the high school, we're still at legacy MCAS. So, you can't compare across those three different tests. So, I can't give you any comparison data. I mean, I could, but it'd be wrong.
Is that because we've chosen to do it that way, or is it?
No, the state, they're telling us, don't compare. And they're not putting out any data crosswalks that help you compare, yeah.
And is the PARC something that everybody did away with, that, forget?
Massachusetts, we did away with it, but in the country.
They still use it?
I think it's like 24 states are still giving it, yeah.
Instead of this?
Yeah.
Or some version of it?
Yeah, we all, all states have to give some kind of achievement test, yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah. So, then there's the criterion reference component. And this is really important for us, because this measures us against the Massachusetts state standards curriculum frameworks. So, those have been redefined recently in every subject area. I've talked about each of those. So, they're basically more rigorous than they used to be. We're looking at higher-level standards. I always use the example of, it used to be that we were looking for operations with fractions kids to master that in seventh grade, and now we're really looking at it in fourth and fifth grade. So, that's a good example. So, this is us against our, our, the standards. And what we wanna see is the gap closing between sort of the general population is going like this in their growth. And the subgroups, in this case, it's that 20%, is going like this. So, we wanna see these guys come up here. But the way you could close an achievement gap is to bring these guys down here, so.
Let's not do that.
Yeah, we're not doing that, yeah, yeah. We, we threw that out. So, so anyway, they made the, the floor so that you're always looking at the growth this way instead of this way. Because you could close the achievement gap a different way. So, that was fun, brings back my math teacher years. So, I think I talked about this, yeah. Okay, so then at the high school, we're still using a year-to-year approach because we're still using the legacy MCAS. This year, the students who are sophomores will, for the first time, take a new MCAS. So, this will be our sort of baseline year, where last year was our baseline year for the CBPS. Okay, so, as I said, everything's sort of changed in how they figure this out, and I'll go really fast here. Basically, they give you points. So, they, at the Department of Ed, they give every school a target for where they wanna hit in terms of kids' achievement. And then if you, if you exceed that target, you get four points. Met the target, three points. Improved from the target, two points, no change, and zero, if there was a decline. So, here is our non-high school indicators. You can see where we got point, oh, no! Oh, whoa!
The magic.
So, you can see, we did really well in our non-high school. A lot of four points, four points. We're looking at some of the other areas. In here, you won't see science, because it's still the legacy MCAS. I just wanted to point that out. So, here's another look at the same data and how they changed the points into the weighted averages. So, you can see where we turn out is, that we are, as a district, meeting all our targets. So, we're really excited about that. Here's our high school, again, lots of really nice scores. We got a little dinged in the chronic absenteeism for our, our subgroups. So, we're working on that. And then again, we're partially meeting our targets because of that, you can see it down at the bottom? Yeah, because of that absenteeism piece. But the growth and the achievement is just incredibly high. So, coming to the end, so as I said, the one through five ranking of schools is out. And this is the new ranking of schools. For this year, the first year, there's only gonna be three categories. So, schools are either gonna be in these lower categories, schools requiring assistance. And they might be here requiring assistance or not needing any at all. And then very, very few schools are gonna be schools of recognition. So, memorize that chart, those are, you don't hear that often. And here's where we came out. So, our middle school and our high school were impartially meeting targets. I think I've explained why we were there. And Alcott and Thoreau meeting targets, and yay to Willard, up in schools of recognition. So, that's great. Feel like our three elementary schools take turns being the top.
So, this is instead of level one, level two?
Yeah, yeah. So, these guys, well, I'm not supposed to do this, I'm not gonna do it.
They're roughly in there, somewhere? Yes, kind of like one through five.
We're all level ones.
It's like a brain drain.
Okay, and this is the same data in a different look. These are the percentiles, remember I said, that you're, that's the norm reference. So, here's Alcott, high school, middle school, Thoreau, and Willard, so it's optimal. And the accountability percentiles here, and the overall progress here. And then this is more data than you ever wanna look at, but I get excited by it. Achievement by subject, by school. Very, very high. So, what we have doing, what we're doing now as a staff, just to give you a sense of how this data is useful to us, is the English Language Arts Specialist, for example, at each of the elementary schools. They took our item, item analysis, and they said, where are we strong and where are we weak? And they came up with, we are weak in the area of conventions. So, what happens is, we don't have a standardized way of teaching kids where to put the comma, for example, or when to capitalize. It's different at different schools. It's not that we don't teach it, it's that we flow into a middle school that needs to have it one, taught one way. So, that gives us that little tweak to go back to our elementary schools and say, this is what we need to change. We need this consistent way, here's the way, let's start teaching. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, we sort of do that for every little subject area within those three subjects. I think I talked all about this. Okay, and districts?
So, that's it, so it's consistent when they get to the middle school across schools?
Yes, yeah.
And likewise, are the middle school, the receptors of that saying, here's how?
Yeah, yeah. So, for example, right now, we have a pre-K to 12 writing committee. And it's the ELA specialist from the elementary schools, the middle school English and Social Studies Department Chair, and the high school English and Social Studies Department Chair. And so, we talk about all of that. We talk about, for example, the research strand. How are we teaching kids to make sure that their sources are credible and that kind of thing?
And likewise, from middle to, even though we say we're one school, we have two buildings.
Yes.
Those guys transferring to, or transitioning into the high school.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And we share all of this with Carlisle as well, yeah, everything that we find.
Again.
Okay, so, categorization of districts. It used to be that you, a district was gonna be categorized wherever your lowest performing school was. So, for us, that was generally in that two category, and so we would be a level-two district. Now, it's not done that way, and it's an average, so we're excited about that. So, Concord Public Schools is in that highest category of meeting targets. And Concord-Carla High School is in the partially meeting targets, because that's where they land. And I think that's it, done.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah. Questions?
It's express lane. I know.
That's good.
So, you mentioned where ELA people are working on this. How else is it being discussed, disseminated out of your office in terms of the utility of this?
Yeah, so, yeah, I just used the ELA specialist as an example, but the math specialists are doing the same thing. The science folks are doing the same thing. And those are our only three subjects that are tested. But then, at the schools, they can also use the data to look at how individual kids are achieving, because we get all that data. We can look at groups of kids, like I mentioned, the ELL students, the English language learner students, and we can track their progress and see what are our moves that we're making that are making the biggest difference. And basically, in every subject area, I would bring that learning down to one thing, which is, it's, it's not enough to have a great teacher one year, your fourth grade year, for example. You have, your teachers need to be great, and they need to be consistent with each other. So, for example, when you're teaching, I used operations or fractions, you wanna use the same language from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade. Even though you might be in different buildings for those years, different teachers wanna use the same language so kids can access their previous knowledge about it.
Can I just make a quick comment on that?
Yeah.
Because first and last grade is literally this week. So, I have a fourth grader, sixth grader, and eighth grader. And this week, by chance, they all have an essay due at the end of the week. And each one of them is using the exact same structure to create this essay, but with different pieces added at each level. And it has been so interesting to see the three of them working simultaneously. And it was like a, it's like this visual representation of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Because it is, it's, it's like you take the fourth grade one, and then you add details and depth, and you create, and you have the sixth grade one, and then you add details and depth. This is really neat to see, so it, it was a great visual representation of what you're talking about.
And it probably adds to their sense of validity of the whole.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I was able to say, look, when you do this, this is what it's gonna look like in two years, and that's why you're doing it this way, you know?
Yeah.
So, it was pretty neat.
And I, and I don't wanna misrepresent, I mean, we do teach, we do wanna teach one consistent way of doing everything, but we also want students to be able to reject that if they find something that works better for them. So, we do, especially as you go through grades, introduce other ways of achieving the same goal.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that, that organizer structure is working. Oh, I have a question too, though.
Oh, okay.
On a di- different topic, I just couldn't. Some, in fact, absenteeism, and I know that seems like that's hurting us at the high school.
Yeah.
How does that, how is it affected by things like long-term illness? If a student is, you know, out for a few weeks?
Well, I might do it more diplomatically.
Yeah, that I know. That's why I was, go ahead.
So, absenteeism is measured as a whole group, like all the students in 10th grade, but it's also measured by sub-group. So, if you have students who are on AP, meaning special ed students, and who are African-American, you can imagine that's a pretty small group.
Right.
And if, in the case of the special ed, if like six or seven of them are absent and don't take the test, then that dates you, so, you know. But, there could be a concussion, there could be cancer.
Oh, is absenteeism absent on the test date? Or absenteeism, absentee rights?
Both, both, both. So, it counts against us for the test.
For either one?
Yes, it counts against the district and the school for the test.
Right.
And absenteeism just counts against the student as well at the school level, yeah.
Even if they're, you know, at home, working on things for two weeks at home while they're on extended?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter, yeah, yeah.
These are points that the commissioner's been on the road a lot this fall, and he's asking feedback on the formula. So, the fact that I had to write an appeal so the high school wasn't in the lowest category because of the lack of participation of a subgroup on the math test.
Wow.
I said, really?
Yeah.
You know, kids who are sick, kids who are hospitalized, really valid reasons. We've got doctors notes, and we're getting, you know, penalized for that.
Right.
He's definitely taking the feedback. He's got a lot of work to do on some pieces of the formula. The APs are the other one we're kind of raising a red flag about, because, because that's a choice for us not to give APs in humanities. And for us to have that penalize us in the formula doesn't make sense. Kristen really said it appropriately. It's a formula for the urban systems who have different struggles.
Right.
And I think he's at least trying to hear and listen to that, which is a brand-new message out of the leadership of Desi. So, there's a, a different ear there now with this new commissioner. He's got a very different culture to work with than what he's hoping for down the road, because this has all been so ingrained in everyone that, you know, accountability is, is a set thing. But it's gonna be interesting to see what he can do with it, but at least he's listening.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so as the principals come up, I'm just gonna open this, if that's all right, though. They're now reading their entire plans. They've each put some, I know you're disappointed. They've each put some slides together so they can talk on highlights of the plan. Things I hope you all listened for are threads of the strategic plan throughout all of their individual plans, and how that's translating from the big-picture level to the building level. They can talk on each of the separate items they're working on. And I think you'll see there's some nice cohesion as we move up K-12 also, so. As always, we are starting without.
Sharp, Mike, add the pretty, I want it.
So, I added the pictures that lie. We haven't seen all the pictures Mike added, so.
Just for picture.
Be nicer to mine.
He was texting before the meeting, he said, oh, I'm, I'm adding pictures of the high school. And Angel and I were giving him some grief, and I said, oh, add pictures for us. All right, moving on. I was in tune with this. It was, it was reading night.
Do you still do that?
No!
I don't know, they're gonna argue in a shared slide deck again.
So, what, what each of us did is we organized in such a way so you could see where the strategic objective was, and then initiatives that we're pulling out from the objectives, and then moving on to the next slide. And then you break out into the squ-. And then you break out into the school, and what the school-specific goals are. I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights, because you have it in front of you, so if you have any questions. But one of the things that we're really focusing on at Alcott is the tier three level. If you notice on the strategic plan, it talked about pre-K to 12 and a tiered intervention for ELA in math. And we're focusing on tier three, which is really your more intensive needs, or students with more intensive needs. And so there's some work that we're doing with special ed and some specially-designed instruction, and bringing that in, making sure that we're tracking the progress of students. Lucy Cawkins is one of the things we will be working on as well. We've been working on that for years. Common assessments around K-1, we're digging it a little deeper with EM4, and then we're doing some innovative and engaging interdisciplinary units with grades two, five.
So, Sheryl, you're doing that across the grade, but your focus is on the tier three, or that's the focus on the tier three?
The tier three is really a focus on those tier, on those group of students that really have intensive needs.
Right, okay.
And that's what, because if.
But your, your goal includes everybody, but your focus is the tier three, it's like.
And our tier one and two is really strong. So it's not an area that we necessarily need to work on or have it in the plan. Because we provide, we track data, we provide structured intervention of all, from regular education to special ed. And so one of the areas of the tiered program that we need to look at is the tier three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Strategic objective number two, well-being, talking about ensuring student achievement through student well-being. This is the, the area that we're focusing on from the initiative, from the strategic plan. Thank you, my assistant. And we're really focusing on tier one here for social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students. So we're really looking at what we can offer in the classroom, and what are some sub-supports that we can offer in the classroom to make sure that our teachers have an expanded toolkit to be able to support students with these needs. And then we're looking at the data that might be collected at the tier one level, and helping us determine tier-two groups for the needs of students. And then the final thing is ensuring a smooth transition of leadership, because I am retiring in June, and someone new is coming in, and so really making sure that that is in place. For strategic objective number three, inclusive culture, and really looking at our cultural proficiency. And that's what we will continue to work on, and you'll see with Tim's presentation, and what some of the other teachers have around the building, and we're expanding ourselves in that area. And then that's Alcott. And Sharon in the future. Okay.
Thank you.
How's that?
All right, beat that number, all right? Two minutes or less?
Who's going to win tonight?
So, and again, you will see time and time again how our objectives are aligned. Lori's oversight and the regular meeting with Kristin and the other principals in the elementary group have enabled us to have some really robust conversations and concentrate in some key areas. So again, multiple paths to success. We have been focusing in on doing some PD, specifically in literacy. And our goal is then, in the end, to have artifacts that we can point to, talk about, that we can use the assessments that are built in to measure growth, but also provide opportunities for enrichment for students exceeding the benchmarks. So meeting the needs of those who need reinforcement through RTI and those who are, need extensions. The, worked on tier one, more modeling and more support for tier one within the classroom. So our ELA and math specialists and special educators coming into the classroom, modeling with teachers, teachers, then having greater confidence to do their best work, and owning the students more readily. Strengthening tier one, two, and three. The operative questions regularly during our progress meetings are, when we identify a student who has a need, what's our goal? What's the length of time of the intervention? And what's the means of the intervention? Then reconvening after six weeks and deciding about duration, intensity, and frequency of that intervention, whether it continues. So it's a constant refinement. We're looking at the West Ed report, I gotta see which page I'm on again. Looking at the West Ed report and implementing the needs of the recommendations of the West Ed report. Regarding our work with innovative interdisciplinary engaging pedagogy, our great work with the high school is an example of the Rivers and Revolutions Program, that it was really a partnership, and we have to embrace the interests of our staff to do their very best work. This was an organic moment where a teacher reached out to another teacher, and we can't get in their way of doing good work like that. And it's authentic, and it's wonderful. So we look at problem-based learning as it means regularly of having students engage in learning. It should be varied, it should be targeted, and it should be authentic. We're looking to communicate more effectively what we're doing, and we should have our parents and our community members at Willard be informed and conversant about curriculum, the instruction, and enrichment opportunities. And we're doing that through our regular coffees, through the use of Twitter. And we can look at the analytics behind our Twitter account, and we can see what resonates. And it's about teaching and learning. It's not about that there is a three-day weekend coming up. It's not about that there is some event coming up. It's explaining what we're doing, and how we're doing, and how it's benefiting kids, that's what resonates. So we feel that getting that feedback's important to share. Well-being, looking at our social, emotional learning curriculum. All teachers will be trained in the new Open Circle curriculum that looks specifically at mindfulness. We're going to be working with the other schools to identify a screener that will enable all our students to build a needs profile of a particular student, but in general of a school or a district, and then be able to layer on the tier one, two, or three interventions as necessary. We have a mindfulness canate, we have mindfulness Monday, that we look to grow deeper. We already have existing programs that we feel good about, including active bodies through box, yoga, maybe bowling curriculums, do all the schools, and we're looking to extend them beyond. Like, we're thinking about having a quiet space for all school gatherings and think-give, and working closely with our new school resource officers, building that relationship where the police are seen as an ally and not someone to avoid. And then the elementary schools would begin our first conversations about initiating conversations about transition to middle school. What are we doing, how are we doing it curriculum-instruction-wise, as well as expectations and information for parents to reduce the anxiety for caregivers, as well as students as they go to the high school, go to the middle school. And then our inclusive culture. Andrew Nalici is just been a wonderful resource right off the bat. He, he works most closely at the middle school and the high school in Norway-Alcott, but he makes himself available as a, just a gem of a resource. He was in Willard today, and he's been a resource for me as we're working with our faculty and the work that we're doing. We have established a goal of every single time we meet as a faculty that we're talking about our needs for improving our proficiency and our awareness. And kudos to our school advisory council when we're talking about this area. It's often, it's perceived to be a discussion of race, and so we decided to add in our report that it's related to all aspects of identity. So I thought that was a nice way of reminding us all about the physical, and then the muted for us. Thank you for your time. One question. Hello.
I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It can be a transition, but Willard used to do a, or you've tried a program where the teachers stepped out for chunks of time. It was different from, is it resonating with you, from Alcott and Willard, where there were, there were periods of time when the teachers got subs, and they had more comprehensive number of hours together?
So I think, Alcott does progress reports in that manner, progress meetings in that manner. We do our progress meetings on Tuesdays, if that's what you're thinking.
So it must be, it was something from when Pat was there, I didn't know if they kept doing it, it was a trial of.
That's right. Workout's a strategy, what you're describing.
Oh, okay. Because of, what I'm, what I'm thinking as I'm listening to all of you is how much time it takes for teachers to be able to be, they need to be able to be together to be able to align all this stuff, to have these conversations.
Right.
I remember that, I think that was a few years ago, before we went to all Tuesday half-days, and now they.
It's a while.
But you ran to your point.
Yeah.
The first slide is one of our steps to get to where we need to be. We need time for reflection, for, to revisit our practice this year, to engage and have conversations across grade level, across building, and between the middle school and our schools.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Quick question. Yes, please. You mentioned professional development under Willard initiatives. Are they often building-specific, or typically? So we leveraged some opportunities that Kristin had put together, but it was our opportunity to really make an investment that we have not made over the last couple of years. So Kristin and Lori were good enough to allocate some, well, they allocated my whole professional development budget for areas that were later recommended as part of the West Ed report. So we're ahead of that curve, because we identified it early, specifically in foundations and Wilson through two programs. So we're ahead of that, which feels very good, and that's, again, the benefit of working with great professionals who were able to identify early on some of these. And again, some of that was building-specific. That was building-specific, but then Empower we did together, Lucy Cawkins we did together, so the others we did together. So there's some that I did, we did in our building, that were specific to our needs, and some that we rallied with the rest of the troops. Thank you.
And I was just going to, I think, confirm, clarify what you just said. You identified those needs, and then the West Ed report came out?
That's correct.
And that's what it highlighted?
Yeah.
Impressive.
Thank you. Good. Thank you very much.
So I have the luxury of going last, and so a lot of what I'm going to say, you have already heard before from my colleagues, because we do talk, and we did our best to try to make sure that our individual school improvement plans were very, very tightly aligned to the district's strategic plan. So hopefully, you'll hear some more, and maybe something different than what you've heard already. So again, our strategic initiatives across the three elementary schools are all the same this year, so I'm not going to repeat them. And I'm going to highlight just a couple that we are focusing on at Thoreau this year, and you can read all of them for yourself. Yep. Okay, so you have already heard about the high quality, I'm going professional development that we are engaging in as a staff. At Thoreau, we are continuing to have our teachers, offer our teachers in grades K to two the opportunity to engage in 40 hours of professional development through a literacy collaborative coaching model that we started two years ago. This is year three. So at this point, we are in our second cohort of teachers who are engaging in this level of professional development. And one of the things that we're looking closely at is, what is the impact that a tight alignment between our tier-one instruction, which is Readers and Writers Workshop, is having in relation to level literacy intervention? So let's just see if there's a correlation between the connection between tier one and tier two. So that's what we're focusing on for our specific professional development opportunities. So a change we did, we are doing bi-weekly progress monitoring meetings, and instead of having our interventionists sort of, you know, going off, and they're the unsung heroes of a lot of work that goes on in our schools, and they happen in tutorials, we're bringing those folks into the meetings to participate with us and to share out progress reports on the individual students with whom they're working, with the teachers at the grade level, so that everyone can be kept in the loop, particularly if they find a newer, different strategy that is hooking them in, so that the entire grade level has the opportunity to take advantage of that. Two more, I have two more big ones, but I'll just.
Go back?
Yeah, okay. So our two, I would say, biggest labor of love initiatives that we're working on this year is the creation of multiple paths for students to achieve in self-contained classrooms. So at a previous meeting, you heard about our intensive learning program for our early childhood students that we have implemented. By the end of this week, we will have implemented a social, emotional learning, self-contained classroom for students with social, emotional needs. So those are, those have been a labor of love. We're really excited about the prospect of being able to meet students with this level of need within our school setting and in our community. So I will report back probably at a later date on how that's going, but wish us luck.
Angel, the one that's about to launch, that's with kids who are currently in other classrooms but have more needs, could possibly, could potentially be sent out now, because it's not working, so you're creating a classroom to keep them?
Yes, yes.
That's amazing.
The need has arisen, and we are stepping up to the plate to see if there's anything else that we haven't done yet that we can do to keep them within our school community.
Wow, that's great.
So. Okay, so, next one? Okay, so for well-being. Keep going. So like the other two schools, we are working to identify a data collection tool to screen children, and figure out if there are any early warning indicators for students who may be at risk for anxiety, or, you know, or stressed, if any, depression, anything. We're looking into how we can get to those students earlier, and then figure out, once we get to past Open Circle, what other, and lunch bunches, and individual counseling, what type of tier-three interventions that will exist and sort of be a cutoff between the intensive learning program that we're offering kids with social, emotional needs. So what happens in between a child, you know, receiving what we've always given them and getting services from this new program? So really having a clear-cut tier-three intervention for those students, and how we're going to decide who gets it. We are also, we have reinvigorated our school's mindfulness committee. We are meeting on a monthly basis to support teachers with implementation K-5 of the Open Circle Unisom Mindfulness. By next summer, all of our teachers will have been trained.
So is that, is the mindfulness a new piece of Open Circle?
It's a new unit.
Is that why it keeps coming?
Yes.
It didn't used to exist?
Right.
And bowling proving is in there now, too.
Oh, okay.
Okay, inclusive culture. Our two initiatives I'm going to talk about tonight on the next slide. Oh. Okay. Andrew has been a fantastic addition. I'm looking forward to partnering with him to bring some high-quality professional development to our staff during faculty meeting time, so that we can get on the same page around what it means to be culturally competent and proficient educators. Looking forward to that. We are also reigniting our PALS program, which you heard Roseanne talking about earlier tonight, to support our English Language Learners, as well as having our first-ever international night, since I've been there in four years. And we're doing that in partnership with the PTG and with our school advisory council. And we are also really being intentional about giving students who are in our self-contained substantially separate classrooms, opportunities to form authentic bonds and relationships with students in the general education classrooms. Those are our big, big bites this year. Thank you.
My goodness gracious.
It's inspirational.
High School Improvement Plan.
Just tonight, feel that pressure right up my shoulders.
My wing is over here by the Sharon Young auditorium. When I, when I pasted over Mike's picture, I was like, you know, this could be, this is my school, this is my school improvement plan. Okay, like the other buildings and the other levels, we align to the strategic plan, so you'll see that. So the first one is, actually, here we go, is multiple paths to success. I think a motif throughout these presentations have been a focus on RTI that we've had on all levels. Making connection to Kristin's presentation, that 20% is both regular education and special education. And RTI started 20 years ago, it's been 20 years. The big push was this is a regular, regular education initiative. And I think that needs to be reminded, that there are students coming together in special education and regular education, especially in the tier-two. So we're really focused on building up the toolkits for the classroom teachers for tier-one, looking at the interventions in place that are, again, regular education students and special education students who come together in intervention classes. And then like Angel, we just went through a screening process and a hiring process for our own social, emotional program and teacher as well. And we think we really won't know until Thursday, when this candidate goes in front of Lori. We think we have somebody. We think we have somebody very strong who's been working at another middle school for the past six years, helped build a program there. So we may have won Powerball with that, our own little Powerball game. So you're going to see that throughout. Obviously, that's 1.1 and 1.2 is really focused on that specialized program, those tier three. 1.3 is establishing, we have already established a master schedule steering committee that allows a master schedule that better supports our students and the learning. The intersection of the master schedule committee and the building reconfigure committee is really coming together really nicely. We had a master schedule committee meeting yesterday afternoon. We have a reconfigure meeting tomorrow afternoon. Tomorrow afternoon, that group of middle school staff are going to really focus on all the things that we have the potential for reconfiguration. What does a sixth grade building really look like? And how does that embed itself into the master schedule as well? Where yesterday, our committee really focused on the strengths and weaknesses of the current master schedule. Mike, I kind of linked you up here. Goal number two is well-being. We have a challenge success committee. We have a mindfulness steering committee. Just today, the challenge success committee asked me to present very briefly in front of all the building principals in a possible district-wide homework free night, but also a tech free night as well, that we're also going to be reaching out to Concord Youth and Family to see if they want to do a partnership. I think we're looking at sometime in March. So we have a challenge, we kind of relaunched challenge success at the middle school. There was a survey taken a few years ago, but we all decided we'd be in the challenge success committee. The parents, the students are on, we have parents, students and staff on this committee. And we all took a look at, all of a sudden, what has been a three-year initiative. And we're like, okay, we need to go all in on this and we need to see some action plans, you know, presented. We're very fortunate to be 100% going with the challenge success folks. And we have a challenge success person who's helping to lead that committee in those meetings as well. A continued focus on our home base program, anti-bullying. And we're partnering up at the secondary level with the high school and a social emotional screener. So you heard the elementary schools talk about social emotional screener. We are again connecting with the high school on a social emotional screener called Pear. The training is coming up. Myself and guidance counselor will be going up to CCHS next week to be a part of that and hopefully have a screener in place similar to our Stars program. We're only looking for something that's like 20 minutes or so, but it touches all students. So we have some real data to work with. Great things happening at the middle school in terms of inclusive culture. We're on our three-year of having an adult group that comes together called CMS Allies to really focus on cultural proficiency. We're in our second year of having a student group rise come together to focus on cultural proficiency. And the two are going to start meeting together for the first time ever this year. We also have a dedicated standing time in each faculty meeting where we're still focused on our summer reading. And we get together in these affinity book groups to talk about our summer reading and cultural proficiency as well. And our last one is really full circle. Pursue that beautiful building that you saw on the first slide. But obviously, our focus even before that is on our reconfiguration right now. And, you know, really looking and studying that feasibility and, you know, really getting out to the community. Delaying my parent coffees just a little. You know, I thought I was going to be in a habit of doing them all in the fall. Andrew and I did get out and have kind of a coffee in the Boston area. But I think I'm going to have another round of them sometime in the winter when we have some hard facts to share out, you know, with all of our parents and guardians. I think I went right up the first pitch.
Can I have a quick question about the, there's two committees. There's the master schedule and this reconfiguring, or reconfigured steering committee, which I imagine that, I mean, you had a lot of work to kind of figure out master schedule issues this year and dig down those and figure out for next year how, you know, to approach it. But approaching, I'm guessing is very different from mixed, you know, two schools and a sixth and a seven, eight. So are they, are they kind of, are they a little bit aligned in their work in terms of like, how does that? How do you get there if you have a master schedule now? It's going to be teachers and things that will change because you're doing just sixth here and seventh, eighth here. And so you work on the schedule and the reconfiguring of, you know, the all the other logistics that you sort of hinted at.
Yeah, so like, you know, yesterday's master schedule committee focused on, you know, we have the kids at the center, we focus on what's best for kids. But we also talked about, you know, Kristen was able to present a history of all the iterations of our master schedule, all the things that haven't really worked all that well, but also things that worked well, including, you know, world language program that is as robust as I've ever seen, elected programs, Latin, a lot of things that have been very recent initiatives that have embedded itself very well. You know, Kristen would know better, but I think yesterday's master schedule committee went pretty much the same as other years that the middle schools have a master schedule committee. However, you know, yesterday, we did have a focus on tomorrow, the building reconfiguration is going to have a focus on getting excited about what does the sixth grade master schedule look like? What does the seventh, seventh and eighth grade master schedule look like? And would it be possible to build two master schedules? And from the input that we received yesterday from the master schedule committee and the input that we're going to be receiving tomorrow from the building reconfigure committee, you know, we have to do a lot of work behind the scenes immediately to see what is possible and to report back to both committees sometime in November, December at the very least.
Great, it's a lot of work.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, a lot of work. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody? Okay.
Do you want to help?
No, no, Joe. Hey, everybody, I'm Michael Stilwell, the principal of the high school that happened to be here. So I think you'll, you hear a lot of what you've, you've already heard. This is very much interwoven, all the, all the school improvement plans with the strategic plan. And, you know, that's really exciting. We are kind of all speaking the same language. So goal number one really is talking about tiered levels of support and that is your RTI model. We've been really fortunate, first of all, under Kristen's leadership, even to be entertaining the idea of RTI at a high school is really due in large part to Kristen. And in many respects, it is, it's easier to attempt to implement at the elementary school level just because of the schedule. Now, to do it effectively is much harder. We were fortunate enough to go over and see Sharon's work recently. And we are really in the infancy stages in watching, you know, Sharon and folks at her school doing RTI is really impressive. But we're really excited about trying to do it at the high school. The scheduling component is a challenge. There's no, there's no getting around that. I can speak to more about that if you have questions at the end. But this year, we're, we're doing, we have three screeners and we're focusing just on the ninth grade in terms of the universal screeners. And that was really just trying to make it a manageable number that we can, we can really pilot. So we did adopt three universal screeners in ELA and math and the social emotional. Justin talked about Pear, which is through Harvard. And ELA and math is through Star Renaissance, which it's been really great. So we've, all freshmen have now taken it. In math, they took it during math. In English, they took it during English. And for the social emotional learning, they took it in world language and social studies because all freshmen take world language. So really excited and we've just started to analyze that data, look at that data and start sharing it out with staff and developing a plan for tier two interventions, which the scheduling component is a challenge, but we're, we're working on it. And we've also identified benchmarks in reading, writing, math and social emotional, more so in reading, writing and math. And we chose a little bit of a different avenue with each. With math, we chose the MCAS benchmark. And with reading, we chose the national benchmark. And that was really based on the number of students that were falling into a warning category that we felt manageable for us to address. And that doesn't mean the other kids are, are not going to be addressed in some capacity. They will, but just for tier two interventions. And what's really great about the universal screener is you can literally just move the benchmark based on where a student should be in nine point three, nine point two, right, ninth grade, second month, and how they should be performing. So it's a really robust screener that we're, that we're really enjoying just getting started to use. The second is really about inclusive culture and again, aligns with the strategic plan. A couple of things that, you know, I wanted to highlight is just really getting a common language and understanding about what it means to be culturally competent. And Andrew, I would echo the remarks of people performing. Andrew's done a tremendous job. Our PR group actually just interviewed him for, as a new teacher, one of the new teachers. So that will be, that'll be coming out soon, but he's just been a great addition and I'm really lucky to have him. We are, we have a night, a community event in Boston soon. It was supposed to be tonight, actually. We moved it to another night. We scheduled without checking conflict, so that's my mistake, no surprise. And so we're excited about that though. That should be fun. And lastly, so this is Alliance for Strategic Plan 2.2. And it's really about focusing on homework, which is kind of a surprise that we landed here. And after getting feedback from staff, from the leadership team, you know, we thought this would be a component of the, the school improvement plan, but not a goal. And so just, I think everyone agrees, there's been a lot of work thus far trying to get a handle on imperfect calculus where it's really challenging to determine how long it's going to take a student to complete homework. And there's a lot of discussions around what's an appropriate moment? And, you know, what's going to take me 30, an hour, it might take someone else only 30 minutes? So developing some practices to determine that. You know, what's the, the purpose of homework? And, and, you know, what can, for an honors class, for some AP class? And really just having some detailed discussions about homework and trying to gather data regarding just the frequency and the time it's taking and again, what its purpose is. I think everyone recognizes that homework coupled with all the other things in a student's life is a challenge. Our schedule for most part, kids take six classes. Most of them are involved in something after school. And then we have the added component of just distractions too, that word. So it's all part of a larger discussion. And I actually feel that it ended up being a goal because I do think it's, it's time for a larger discussion about it as opposed to just pockets. We have made great strides as a school in terms of no homework over break. And we actually have no homework this weekend for seniors, just to allow for some additional time with the November 1st deadline coming up with 80% of our kids apply early. So trying to provide a little relief, but really just trying to create a systematic structure and process to, to have this discussion and, you know, making sure that we're still offering a rigorous academic environment, but not too much. And that's it. Any questions for me?
I have this quick question about the homework. The, the group that did the study and then the report, is that, are they woven into the conversation? Or is that report still something that you guys tried to adhere to as a school? Or is that sort of?
So are you referring to the challenge success data or the feedback that?
No, I think there was like a homework committee that many years ago.
Yes, yeah.
Probably yes.
Yes, okay. So the homework practices that were, came out of that committee are now well entrenched.
Oh, okay.
So even like coordinated assessment days this week because the quarter ends. So, you know, each department has two days. Again, no homework over breaks, certain holidays. And so, yes, all those are very much entrenched.
That's great.
And yes, it's definitely made an effort. And we now realize, just watching kind of the stress of the seniors applying to college and, you know, the process to apply to school is literally like taking another class. And so trying to provide some relief during that time because it coincides with the end of a quarter. Or, you know, so it's just a really tough time.
Yeah.
And is that captured in your reference to differentiation around homework?
Yeah.
And the impetus for this becoming a goal this year, I'm excited about too. I've heard so much about this. It's great to see it up here. Do you feel like it mostly came from parents having concerns about the current, kind of, the homework situation from students, from faculty, where?
I can't say it came from any one group. I really think it is a collective response where, you know, you have what, what, we, the administrators are seeing. We have, we know what families are, are seeing at home. And, and, you know, we have a staff who's made a great effort to, to be part of the discussion and make changes. And some feeling as though, you know, geez, we've done, we've done a lot. But really, the calculus is, if you look at the number of classes kids take, it can't be more than 25, 30 minutes per class a night, or it gets into a three-hour plus number. Now, that's very easy to say, but sometimes you're going to give homework and another night might be an hour. Again, back to the point of what might take me an hour might only take you 30 minutes. So it's not as easy as just saying 25, 30 minutes, but that, you know, that is the goal. So we do have, I was talking to a young lady the other day. She's taking two AP and a presidency class, loving them all, really challenging. And when I asked her how much homework she has, she said four to five hours a night. She, but she immediately qualified and said, well, I'm very thorough. I could do it in less. And we've also recognized that AP as a college-level course, there is a little wiggle room in there. But four to five hours is too much. And so it's, it's an ongoing discussion that we need to continue to have. Ultimately, the APs or the presidency, whatever it is, that is part of the process of getting into college. They need to do it. And that's what all other kids across the country are doing. So we don't want to create an environment where if you can't do that at Concord, you can do that somewhere else. And when you look at our AP scores, they're off the charts. I mean, they really are off the charts. So it's a delicate balance though between your teaching AP course. There is so much material to get through. You can't cover it in 60 minutes that you have a day. So it's, it's a challenge. But I think everyone recognizes that student stress is really high and we can only control what we can control. You know, the phone is a big component of it and there's only so much you can do about that. So homework is something we can really try and to focus.
Right.
So you said something, I'm calling it, 80% of the seniors are applying.
Nearly 80% are applying early.
I know.
Yeah.
Does that just go every year or that goes up? That's just.
Wow.
And it's not unique to CCHS, I'm sure.
And so that clearly the stress, the majority of the stress is on the students. However, you know, a part of the equation is writing recommendations. There's a teacher in this audience right now that knows has to write like 30 of them. That's with grades closing. And so that's a challenge. And Doris also led our early release, one of our early release pastors, a fantastic job. So, so yeah, it is, it's demanding on everybody.
I have a quick question on something earlier in the presentation. You're talking about the social emotional learning screener.
Yeah.
What kind of questions is that? Is it kind of self-direct, you know, is it questions where the students have to honestly answer what they're doing? Or is it questions that get at something without?
It's a, it's a great question because it was really my, my biggest wonder. And it was the only one we allowed in and opt out for that reason. I can't give you a really intelligent response about the types of questions. But I can tell you what it's trying to do is to assess how engaged they are, what type of connections they have with adults, with kids, things of, things of that sort. But after sharing the questions with a few parents that did ask, nobody opted out, which is great. Which is really great. So we're really excited about.
I did peer over some ninth grade children last week because I happened to be there when they were doing it. And just enough to see, not to see what they were answering, just to see with a first screening of questions. And it was, I, I enjoy coming to school most of the time and that kind of a Likert scale.
Okay.
I participate in class most of the time. You know, it's pretty open-ended. I'm sure it got into a little more anxiety level and stress level and balance and all of that. They're rating themselves and they're asked to answer honestly or else the tool is not helpful.
And there's a little YRBS crossover there, is there not?
There could be. It'll be interesting to see correlation between the.
Oh, right.
You're right. It will be interesting to see the correlation.
Yeah.
As we get.
For more clarity, you referred to three screeners, you referred to screener. Three screeners are people who interpret the instrument data, which is the screener. Is that correct? There's a screener which is the instrument and screeners that are people qualified to.
No, no, this is based on the national averages on everyone who's taking the same assessment. And, and so it, there's no, I mean, it's all, it's algorithm. It's giving you the information back quite quickly.
And help me understand. Sorry. Help me understand, three screeners then?
So there are three separate screeners. So there's one for math, one for English and then one for social emotional.
Thank you very much.
And the math and English is the same company, Star Renaissance and Social. And the math and English is the same company, Star Renaissance, and social emotions.
Got it, thank you. Thank you very much, Mary.
Before they go, I just need to give quite a shout out to this leadership team. I mean, you can see the work they're doing and you give me a lot of accolades. This is not a one-person task, any of it, and you can see what they've taken back for energy and momentum and really built incredible plans going forward that are just moving us ahead exponentially faster than we probably even anticipated. So I want to thank them, they're putting a lot of time and work and glad we could sort of show off. Thank you.
And it's an umbrella, having worked on the strategic plans, see it all come through. To your point, it's, it's coming through so clearly these, it's really neat to see.
And we had a little fun too, if you didn't know.
Clearly.
I think mine should be part of every slide that.
I agree.
It's going to be some good ideas.
We make humor one of our norms, and you're tearing that up.
These kids are lucky to have all of them.
Yes.
Yes, they are. Drive carefully home.
Thank you.
Enjoy eating.
Have a nice night.
Careful.
Okay, and next agenda item is old business. And first of that is the tech user group, please.
So I have had some feedback from a couple of you and tried to be in connection with the town leadership. So I think we're probably at a minimal discussion here tonight, because there's still moving pieces. Having communicated with, I've heard back from Tim Goddard at Karlog first. So the MOA is in draft form and getting really close to completion. I have asked to get a copy of that so we could see what they're proposing. So I'm hopeful that that'll move along and we'll be able to share what that looks like with you. I think we have other language, just little tweaks here and there and a couple of places to make sure we're consistent or clear. Some of the feedback was clarity between town and towns and a little more wordsmithing to do. The part I was hoping we could specifically focus on, I left last meeting thinking the main area of content to deliberate on was the right to relocate. We had some discussion over, it's, it's two-pronged, right? You don't want to give up your right as owner of the property to choose that, but we also understand the complexities of it. So having talked to Chris Whalen, this was what we sort of proposed that we could consider. You'll see the addition to the language from last time now says the district will provide, you can go to number eight, Aaron, that'd be very helpful. And it's in red on the screen. We've added, aside from the statement that the district may locate the studio, we've added that the district will provide notices to town twelve months prior to any relocation plans in order to allow for a formal agreement on the impact on the equipment currently located in the studio. So it acknowledges there's an equipment discussion to be had. Chris and I were, we at least, we were in agreement that to try to sort that out right now, it just didn't seem to be a good use of time. He did suggest that there would need to be some notice so they could plan ahead. I think the amount of time of that notice could be up for some discussion. And I think then I would take it back for another reiteration and more information on the MOA that I can provide to you so we could have another conversation.
So I was concerned that the twelve months is, ties our hands a bit, right? I mean, I, I. You know, we sort of felt like, like sometime in the spring, we might need the space in the fall.
Yeah, it doesn't coincide with what you're sitting on.
Right.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, the way our cycle works, twelve months effectively can mean eighteen to twenty-four.
Maybe more, yeah.
Yeah. So true. We have no intention to, to.
Exactly.
No.
I would be more comfortable from our end, having it say six.
I was gonna go three.
Oh, yeah, there we go, I was gonna say they might say nine, but.
Well, six doesn't really help you very much.
Six doesn't help us or the?
Well, it helps you more than twelve, but not quite as much as three.
If you figure out in March or April, you need to.
If you figure out in spring, you need space in the fall, you need.
Well, that's true if it's that.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, maybe three, I mean, that's.
I hear.
Well, I mean, I can bring three and six back and talk some more to Chris on.
I think, yeah, giving him, giving him the understanding of not, we're not trying to be, you know, difficult. It's just that we're really discussing that, that magnitude, you know, a change to moving stuff. It's possible it can happen in a three week, I mean, a three, three-month window.
We, I would like to think we would be talking about it and, you know, sort of hinting to them that this may be coming in a longer time period.
Right.
Well, before, well before that, exactly.
To be, have our pants tied, yeah.
I think we all regret that this has taken a long time, we thought it was simply simple. I recommend that we have an informal conversation with Mark Howell at the town level, who is the one equipped to talk about what would be required for the town, not to move the equipment, but to move the capacity of peg to a location. The equipment is easy, as opposed to the fiber that's got to be rerouted, negotiations that have to occur with Comcast. Let's ask him what a fast track would be if the schools were required to do this, notwithstanding the fact that we have no intention of doing it if we don't have to. Would that be useful homework?
Oh, sorry.
He'll know, he'll have an answer for us.
He's a good resource for that.
So will you follow?
I'm happy to informally.
IT, Congress.
The team will follow up with them.
Oh, I can do that.
You can do that?
Yeah.
I just had a question, what's the likeliest scenario where we need that space and for what purpose?
Huge, huge increases in student enrollment is the only thing I think that would ever drive to ask.
And does this, does the space lend itself to one or two additional classrooms or?
Not full-size classrooms, but small spaces for sure.
Yeah. Okay, but so it could be used.
I mean, we, it would be a last resort, there's no question. Okay, so let me take those pieces back and, yes, we'll have another draft for November.
I guess the contract will take six to twelve months to agree.
Yeah, I was about to say, we'll be able to work out those details quickly, but.
Well, I think a couple of you have said it is a twenty-five-year document.
It's just twenty-seven.
Want to take our time and get it right, so it's fair.
Yeah, yeah.
We aren't getting in the way of anything operational, so it's, it's okay.
That's good.
So our next campus project update.
Yep, Jared's gonna cover all of the campus.
So feasibility study, we met on the sixteenth of October with many town representatives as well as Gail to discuss many topics that are in the school services. Meeting went really well, was attended by many members of the town, engineer, sewer, et cetera. So we've also been studying Gail, the ASBILTS, some CAD designs of the campus. Communication's been great and I feel at this point that they're gonna provide us a great report on time.
Said some good questions as far as.
Yeah.
That show that they understood, they've done some homework and they understood, they listened well.
The drainage, so we, we awarded the project, we're ready to go. We expect this project to begin Friday the second, so next Friday, and to take no longer than the fourteenth of December. And the bids came in right where we expected, the quotes came in under twenty-five thousand, just under. Curb cut?
Just to, sorry, just to confirm on that, this is the drainage project. The, the town has said, if we do this and we, then basically no matter what the results, our obligation is complete, you know.
And I asked that of.
This is basically kind of the last step.
Natural Resource Commission, and I was with them again on Friday and reiterated that. And the answer is yes, we all have met our obligation.
Okay.
So.
Obviously, we're hoping it's gonna work.
Yeah.
And, and a few of us have heard that two or three times.
Oh, Jeff, oh, oh, Jeff, yes, got it, Jeff.
In other words.
Curb cut?
Yep. Curb cut, we're doing a request for quotation. We've contacted three engineering firms already, already. And we're waiting for their quotes, we're also gonna be putting it in the central registrar. And same with the emergency shower and the fume hood duct work, that also is gonna be going to the central registrar. Brian is meeting with an engineer who quoted us back on this two years ago. I believe he's meeting with him tomorrow to see if anything has changed and sort of what to expect in a ballpark of prices.
Nice.
Well, good.
Progress.
Progress, yeah.
And those things will just as, as a copier will do the work or we wait, we have to wait for vacation or wait?
I don't think so. The curb cut might be one, we have to choreograph more, but the others, I think are pretty.
And as you know, the drainage is, we get to beat the frost, right?
Right. In the frost we had two nights ago.
Yeah.
Hard, hard frost.
No, I know. That's great.
Okay, the campus, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, I tie these two together and I'm like.
On the books, they didn't know, go ahead.
Any word on the bathrooms at the field, the number of bathrooms and getting an exception and all that?
Yeah, so this came up last time I was with Delia and the Natural Resource Commission, too, on Friday. We are actively looking to get the, we need to outline the process for what the waiver request is. We believe it's a state-level request, so that's our first appeal. And then we need to then be led through the rest of the process. So we're trying to get a handle on what that process is, get things moving and begin, begin to actively take on that challenge. Because we hear different things as to what the options might be. We hear they can fairly easily grant a fifty percent waiver, which drops us to the twenty-two numbers, something's still way too high. And then we need to do more homework to see if we can continue to try to lower that, so.
So there's a little chicken egg here. Is, will Gail help us understand the right number? Forgetting, like, we think twenty-two or twenty-ish is too high, but is, is there a right number here? Did CCAP play have a number?
Every reference, every conversation I've had, I think is completely anecdotal, so I don't want it to be the formal number is.
How do we?
Four to six, something like that.
So if we were gonna ask for a waiver for.
Right.
What, in our world, what, how many would we want?
I think four to six, we remember CCA plate still talking on the shed, you remember the shed? We're still having an impermeable surface conversation with the town on that, which looks like it might have some options there. So they were giving us square footage, they expected that the restroom would have been when they originally designed it, which was not extraordinary, four to six facilities. So, just in terms of the shed, it looks like if we get the ASBILTS, the CCS at play ASBILTS to the town, it looks like they built under the permit, under the amount of impermeable surface permitted. And so as long as that documentation lines up, the shed would be considered part of the permit and we get a, finally get a green light on that. So more, we don't have all those pieces in place yet, but at least we have the processes coming together and there's some opportunity there that we hadn't had before, so. Things are moving, some faster than others, but things are moving. So to Mary, to your point, the bathrooms are absolutely a priority to figure that process out and try to get what the answer is.
Yeah, there's what, the process itself and then what's the right number.
Correct.
Whatever, thank you.
So that's, covers pretty much the oversight topic.
Yeah, I think, well, we might want to share kind of the process with Gail for this, for this group, because, right? We, we're meeting on November twentieth?
Yep.
As the campus oversight subcommittee? Okay, I was gonna sound really intelligent here. We meet with that committee, the subcommittee, go ahead, you want to?
Yeah, so.
Save her, save her.
I'm trying to, we're trying to subcommittee first and then come here.
Yes, that is the plan. We, in meeting with Gail, it became pretty clear they needed a month to do their work. And for the subcommittee to meet in between, we'd be hearing an update on the steps they're taking and there wouldn't be a lot more to talk on. So the way we left the discussion was that we would meet again late in November, check in on how that progress is going, feel confident timelines are gonna be met. They assure us they will have cost estimates to us for December fourteen. Expecting then at the December eighteenth meeting, which originally on your list of meetings was that as needed, it is needed. So plan on that, it'll be the eleventh and the eighteenth. And then we'll have some numbers to work with as we discuss capital articles. So that we'll have some level of informed decisions to make.
So I think what we wanted to do was, if you look at that timeline, if you guys are looking at your calendar, we have, we have a deadline from Gail of the fourteenth of December.
Mm-hmm.
With costs. And then we have our meeting that we will now have on the eighteenth of December, where we'll have to make decisions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Decisions about.
It sounds like we got over a weekend.
What to take, how to.
About to what to take to town meeting.
How much? What projects, how much?
Yes.
Wow.
So the thought, I believe, was we put a, a meeting for our group, for the campus oversight committee with Gail on the calendar, hoping that most, everybody on the school committee can attend and get really educated on.
Okay, got it. Which, and which is when?
That's all you're already doing.
Which is, which is the twentieth of November from two to four.
Yep.
And the hope was that as many people.
Oh, Christmas the November, okay.
They will be there with an update.
Yes.
And then it might offer everybody the opportunity to ask questions, et cetera, because I think as we start to see things come together, we're going to need to be really well-informed and kind of have our ducks in a row of how it might, what, how it might come to the other town meetings, articles.
Yep.
Yep.
Where is that meeting?
In here, in here.
Two o'clock, November twentieth, two o'clock here.
November twentieth, two o'clock. I'm here. And I guess I should, I'll, I'll serve my wallet, so I'll check.
Okay.
Okay. But hopefully people can do that and if not, certainly we'll find time to, to, one is get caught up. It's, and it's public meetings, it's probably become great.
Great.
It's aggressive, we're aware of that.
No, that makes sense, and it's good to know in advance, because then we also need to know that once we get those numbers on the fourteenth, we all need to be prepared to review stuff over that weekend.
Exactly.
Right. And my, my hope is that we, yeah, and my hope is with the twentieth and then a meeting on the eleventh.
Yeah, there's some stages.
There are those. There are some opportunities to, with all that we learn and where things might be pointing.
I agree.
To kind of get, I mean.
I don't expect we're gonna wait all the way to the fourteenth to have a sense of their rebuilding. I agree with that.
And given what happened in our early meetings with the magic that Jared produced in articles quickly with worded, you know, of this, the, the dot, you know, we're thinking we had a special town meeting, it seemed like you both were pretty well-equipped to kind of.
Sure.
Start to craft things and say, you know, what they might look like.
Well, yeah, hopefully like November twentieth, great for that meeting, to have some idea what the projects, what the.
Right, then we get a little. Mm-hmm, exactly.
Numbers look like.
And ideally, everyone's there to hear the same thing.
And I think we said we would have Gail associates at the school committee meeting on December eighteenth also.
Yes, definitely.
So that'll be another opportunity.
Definitely. Well, that's showtime.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and that's exciting, but at least.
No, no, it's the final, but at least.
Asking the final questions, that's good.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Not that our group ever like, has questions at the last minute as we make decisions.
So, no, it's not too late. Because we, right?
Would you rather, you say should we have them there in the?
Should we try the Monday eleventh? As, as you said that, I.
Yeah, the question would be.
Then I know the numbers are due till that Friday, but this is the Tuesday, like.
We can talk to Gail if you, if you want to, I mean, I understand why you're asking, so let us, let us have.
Because we're, we're gonna get final data and try to talk it all through and make a final decision in one meeting.
Yeah, it's too much, yeah.
It feels like.
It'd be great that it holds that hold some time that night if they have it.
Yep.
As we start to, as things start to take shape.
Yeah.
I'm interested to hear what that is.
Maybe hold time both minutes.
Yeah, it makes sense if we aim for them on the eleventh with as much information as they can possibly give us.
Yeah.
But you could then really deliberate and come back on the eighteen.
Right.
Right. I don't know off the tip of my, I'm not exactly sure, we have a number of meetings with them and that could fall into, is it three or five?
It's five.
It's five, so depending on where we're at, maybe eleven and eighteen.
Yeah.
So kind of two, one to five officially?
We've had one official, the kickoff meeting, I don't think.
I mean, it'd be better to have them at both than not, certainly.
We send them reserved in town.
Yeah.
But I love them, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, I know.
We do want to set up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't.
That makes sense.
Good, that's helpful.
Good on that, moving right along to new business in the quarterly variance report?
Yes, so when you pack it, you have the first quarter variance report. Yes, so when you pack it, you have the first quarter variance reports uh for both C- CC and CPS. Uh by one hundred function, you'll see a number of transfers, um and this is the format that you'll be given uh three or four times a year. And it looks busy, um and it will be busy, we have about eighty-five to ninety percent of what I know of to be encumbered. Um so obviously you can't encumber everything. So the good news is, is in both budgets, you see a positive balance at the end. You see i- in this Concord Carolina budget, the tuitions uh have a high negative number, we're gonna apply circuit breaker to that. But overall, we're in pretty good shape, but I bet you some numbers jump out at you if you wanna ask specific questions, please do.
So the the transfers the, so in in essence, the the, I'm I'm looking at the um, the first one I looked at was CPS.
Yep.
Um
The four fifty-five.
Yeah.
Yep, so a lot of my transfers are, so from the from the one one thousands to the one thousands, to two thousands to the two thousands.
Okay.
So what I did with that big number there is we had through attrition, we had a number of um, we had, we had some monies available. Also getting uh things into the right accounts, um you know, a big number of that four fifty-five actually went into substitutes.
Mm-hmm.
Because if somebody goes out on maternity or paternity or anything, there's a savings there. But new DESI guidelines require us to put it into function two-three-two-five. So moving monies from the two-three-oh-five
Mm-hmm.
to the substitute salaries.
Mm-hmm.
That was a big chunk of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And what about instructional assistance?
Instructional assistance, um that was big chunk of that was, sorry.
Would would one normally find it in the same column as a positive, is that what happens?
Say that again?
When you look at these, I'm sorry, interrupt what you were doing here.
No, I was, I was listening.
I'm trying to decipher like, so would you find it normally in the transfer as a positive, either broken up or in one place?
Yeah, well, it's broken up. The reason for the the big uh reduction in the um, in the assistance is the tutors. We've done a lot of rearranging tutors. Um what I did is I went through, um I encumbered, it's very hard to encumber the salary, the hourly people, but what I did is I figured out what their contractual amount was and I encumbered, I pretty much changed eighty percent of the people's hourly in the system to know exactly what I'm paying them.
Mm-hmm.
So my goal really in all the salary lines is to get the available balance to zero, so if it if it moves to cent, I know and I question it.
Mm-hmm.
Um so right now, that is really uh the tutors line, um and that might actually, um there might be monies put back in there because there's um, there's vacation buyback and there's sick time buyback for tutors uh that are grandfathered in for that that I'm now aware about, that I'm gonna have to transfer the money back back in, that is not encumbered.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably about a hundred thousand, give or take, on each each side.
Okay.
You know, I was just gonna remind you as he tries to answer specific questions, we were budgeting to the bottom line before and that's why you see so much movement here and you're gonna see it, and this is probably the busiest it will be is the first quarter, is everything gets encumbered. But this year, we, we are still trying to line item budget off of a budget that was built to the bottom line. And so you're going to see all this, this realignment and cleanup still going on. None of this will look this way a year from now, because we've budgeted, budgeted totally differently.
And not based on what you see.
Um so, but it it's still in that transition mode of, when you're budgeting to the bottom line, you do have lines that are up and down all over and um we at least know where they are now.
Right.
Yeah.
And um can reallocate to to make sure that we're solid and flush.
Right. So just to follow up on something, I think it's following up on something, and you were asking if you see a negative somewhere, do you see a positive somewhere else to balance it out? And here, I I'm wondering, are there some places where it doesn't necessarily end up in the same place? So one area could have a reduction of an amount, you know, call it around three hundred thousand. Um but a hundred of that could end up in one line item and two hundred could end up in a different line item, so we don't necessarily see
Correct.
matching positive and negative numbers here.
No.
Okay.
Until we get
But is there any, I'm sure it's mapped, it's mapped somewhere.
It is.
On here, it's not mapped, what's going where?
No. No, and when you see the the next school committee, you'll see the one, the one thousand variance reports, then I'll have a little bit of um the narrative. Um
That's.
But it will, it won't be as busy, you'll see that most of, um you might even see some of the 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 one hundreds here actually have zero transfers within, they're all within the same function.
Uh-huh.
But the two thousands obviously are our biggest function and they're s- they're being transferred out um to to support some of the other ones.
And when we look at
The only big one in the one thousands is that, as you know, the Director of Teaching and Learning has moved out of the one thousands into the two thousands.
And when we look at your bottom totals, we see that everything that was transferred uh one way arrived somewhere else to the penny.
Yep.
So there's nothing still pending or
No.
Yep.
It's all, all of this used up or whatever.
Yeah.
Even though the map isn't entirely visible.
Exactly. Right, it all ends up in the other column, in another column somewhere, yeah.
Yeah. So the way that this is done, just so you know, is the five hundred plus lines, one by one, just going through and making the transfers. So if you saw the, the five hundred line one, as Laurie has seen before, that is one busy sheet.
All right. Oh, and another question, on some of these, where there is not money marked as transferred, there's ju- there's nothing, I mean, it looks like there's nothing transferred, but I guess my question is, why are they on here? Because this isn't every line of the budget.
So this is, this is not a transfer report, this is a variance, so this is my quarterly variance to let you know from a
Right, right. Got it.
from a a one hundred function, which is a
Right.
pretty good showing of where we are.
Yeah, okay. So we're not just looking at transfers, we're also looking at
Yeah, yeah. And you're gonna also notice, if you compare this to DESI's charter accounts, there are still functions here that are no, that are, that are no longer current. And we're gonna get that more in line as we go forward, it's a big project to take on right now, we have a new accountant. Um that's gonna be one of our goals, but for next year's budget, we're going to uh align ourselves a hundred percent with DESI's functions.
And you, and you think we're align, we're looking to align, that we're sitting around
Sure.
aligning this to DESI's charter accounts?
Yes.
Thank you for that, I thought I knew all of them.
Of course. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think we both admit, there's a little frustration in this activity right now because this much movement, it is
It's hard to see what's really going on.
really demonstrative of two very different processes.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's sort of that crosswalk that, yeah, we need to know where it's going, obviously, and we need to see the bottom lines are still solid to get through the year. But um in terms of what it actually tells you is the actuals of FY nineteen, that's gonna inform us going forward, not the FY nineteen budget exactly because we, we did our best last year, but we're still, we're still in transition.
Is it, it's still helpful from a directional standpoint, just to kind of generally see what's happening, it's definitely helpful to see.
Yeah, yeah. See how it's going. Yeah. I think this sitting next to FY twenty in November, actually, that's a full suite of like, okay, this led to that.
Yeah.
Um you're kind of missing a chapter that
Connects.
connects it.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
But you warned us.
I warned you, yeah.
Long, long way from now.
You guys both warned us, yeah.
That is, this is a surprise.
Yeah.
Long list for now.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Great, thank you, it's a lot of work.
I miss you.
No, I mean, we are, it it, the positive here, which does, I think, relate to how, how we strongly confident we're gonna be in FY twenty,
we're very confident right now in where we are from now till the end of FY nineteen. We know where the money is, we know what we spent, we know what we need.
Yeah.
Um all of it's tracked, so we're very confident in what those numbers are, for the rest of the year.
Jared's not sleeping.
I don't know if he's sleeping, I don't really think so.
This is fine, come on.
You have like twenty minutes left.
Yeah.
So you said you, you've encumbered everything that you know about, where do the surprises come from, generally speaking? Like utilities in the winter, things like that, or?
That, that, and we do try to encumber that, surprises are just me learning the contracts more. Like, uh the surprise was, was the tutors that it's some are grandfathered in, and the, and bus drivers, they receive vacation. Um which is great, 'cause if I hadn't done, if we hadn't done the zero-based process and, and me ask that question or try and prove out, the the way that I did FY twenties is to literally prove out every single salary line in FY nineteenth. And if I couldn't do that, I I questioned it, so got me questioning and then that came up, so now we're budgeting for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, stipends, I actually think, you know, I now have a good grasp of all the stipends in there. I actually know now stuff that's not even encumbered yet, um because we're a little bit behind, right? You know, through asking questions and Ian, I can't say enough about Ian, um his knowledge, um it's it's a good budget. And FY twenty-ones will be even better, but we're, we're very comfortable right now where we're at.
Good. Many of us is surprised.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, very many are surprised in FY twenty.
So Jared, it's going in the direction you wanted, the way you thought it would go, no s- no, like, oh my goshes and?
No, I thought it would be done a month and a half ago, though.
Oh.
So, but.
I'm forgetting, of course, I will have a bunch of you on this day, this hour, this minute.
Yeah, none of us thought.
Now. I'm gonna meet that.
I know you are. What am I, huh?
So, yeah, but it's been
Can you, did you pick any color or get Mike to help with the slide?
Put some photographs in there.
It's a little dull.
I don't do color, this is what I see, black and white.
What do you do next year? Alterating the shading and the.
Black and white, no gray areas. Photos of administrators in their pajamas.
Jared, what are you gonna do next year?
Yeah.
Wow.
We're starting. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be easy, yeah.
Next year, you're gonna have a true dashboard.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be very
It's gonna be awesome.
Really great starting place.
This is all worth it, I can say that.
Oh, sure.
You've worked on it.
I, I learned the budget, eventually, hopefully, there's another question, you'll be able to ask me that I will be the answer.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's a goal.
All your hard work.
Number.
These were the best budgets he's ever built.
I said that today, I told my wife that.
Yeah.
I know.
And she's like, I don't care, whatever.
It matters to me.
Just go off of the kids.
It's still encouraging.
All right, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Awesome.
No. Uh we'll go to the first vote, um which is a CPS vote, vote to accept donation to the benefit of the CMS ban program. Do I have a motion that this Congress School Committee votes to accept the gift of ten thousand dollars from the Polititano family giving fund to benefit the CMS ban program?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we did some homework on this one because it's so so generous, and um this is a family that had attended the musical last spring, heard the talk of needing some instruments, uh wind instruments, I think specifically, and
Wow.
stepped up and decided to help us with that.
Wow.
So we, Ian talked to them the other day, 'cause I said, I, this, I need more, and
Yeah.
they just said, we heard the need and felt moved to to have.
Oh my gosh, that's amazing.
So we're really grateful.
We are lucky that we did work in this community.
We're very grateful. Yeah.
With great gratitude.
Yes.
Well, Jared says, good, I'll take it out of the budget.
Well, it's also a testament to what they do with with that program.
Yeah, I think they're, they were truly inspired, is I think some, what happened
Really good.
at the middle of the show last year.
Yeah, it's terrific.
Yeah. Great.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Could I motion to uh?
I'll make a motion to approve this uh CCHS out of country trip for twenty eighteen nineteen in the condition that we receive a signed district liability insurance waiver, this is for Montreal Beck, Q five, I'm Jim Alone.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Well, I was listening. Very good. Um, do you wanna do the two
Sure, so I, the the votes, um, well, let me just, let me, we're doing the goals.
common votes together? Yeah, goals for us, yeah.
Um so, they didn't change much from what I sent, so hopefully, I wanna just note, make sure there weren't any edits before, um, I guess, so I would take a motion to approve the um Congress School Committee goals of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second. With, with thanks for the work you did on this to absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
A lot of that.
Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carrie's, okay.
Can we, can we move on to protocols?
I go, I just keep going count and then you're
Yeah, go ahead and then we'll.
Very. So um, I will say, I wanna say about the practices and protocols, um
Excuse me, one second.
Yeah.
Could we just look at CPS?
We did do CPS.
Yeah, we'll move the CPS all together and then that.
He's doing our television.
Nice guy.
So we're sticking CPS, but what I wanna say about the practice of protocols, Mary picked up on um about three or four um sentences that had plural chairs or plural school committees, and since we were, we were working on these, I split them into two separate documents. At one point, we had to merge, so I went back and edited those, they're not in this version, but it would just be, um, I have, I have the version to re-approve them, I will just edit the plural to the singular in the places that
Yeah, like it was, we're trying to get one.
where where it made. Yeah.
Yes.
Where it says school committee chairs, it'll say school committee chair.
Those.
Chair, exactly, and I missed that in a number of places, Mary picked up on that.
Yeah.
So um if I could have a motion to approve the Concord School Committee practices and Concord School Committee protocols with the edits that I put in a singular area.
So moved as edits, yeah.
Second.
All right, all those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye.
So those all, Carrie?
So now we're
Dave and Joy.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the Concord Carolina School Committee twenty eighteen, nineteen goals.
You are. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make the motion to approve the Concord Carolina School Committee practices for twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Okay.
With the, with the Concord.
Oh, I'm sorry, with the same edits is discussed, right, planned on land?
Yeah, yeah, they were, they matched precisely both of them, so I changed them.
Practices of protocols, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
That.
Aye.
Thanks for the story.
And for the last motion of the evening.
Yeah. You're welcome, thank you, uh thanks for catching. Last motion.
I move
Play ball!
Committees to a Jordan, and go watch the games.
Two one.
Do we have to watch the game?
Two one.
I'm out of it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Come on.